Thank you, Masons. Um, we have to come to order on November 10th, 25th. We have a what?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Here. Down in the night.
Here.
They have a form and you can submit it.
See, uh, first thing I want to bring home, I think it was a question is, um, we received a thank you from Chamber of Commerce and we are grateful for your efforts in improving our community and promoting our local business. We thank you. It's from our chambers. So we are a friend of working together as a family and we proceed to continue with that. And at this time, I would like to present to our President of the Chamber of Commerce, Donald Buckman, and he would like to give a presentation.
Hey, cool. Um, they're not there. All right, guys. Uh, as you already know, we're just having a fundraising program for, uh, Volso's Parks Department, uh, making a food fight. Um, we appreciate the change and participating in that. We had a great time. Um, also like to thank the VFW for offering us that last minute indoor visit because of the rain. About two thousand, we were able to arrange these slots and we'd like to the, uh, Parks Department, thirty hundred dollars. Uh, if you guys would...
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Um, next order of business is the total of, um, minutes from ten thirty to twenty-five. We have a motion to accept the minutes, so we're unable to accept the minutes. Okay. Any discussion?
I got something. Uh, I asked Paula to change the minutes when I asked the lawyer about Kuki's resignation. I wanted to make sure that was done.
What's wrong with that?
When I asked our lawyer last meeting if, uh, we needed to accept her resignation, she also said that she was going to change the minutes a little better.
Don't be. With those, uh, corrections, anything else? That motion on the board is seconded to accept the minutes on both the corrections. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
No.
Okay, next thing is Frederick's report. Any one who to accept Frederick's report? Take a question. May I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Any questions on that? All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Reports submitted by police, fire, street, water, and sewer. Any questions on any of those reports that were submitted?
I had that quick question in the fire key. Um, are we not doing, uh, fire riot stuff?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
I don't know if you can play this. You should have the report for the, for an hour or five here.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Come on to that. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions on the departments? Go forward. I put, uh, department of water steward. Uh, make motion to accept the reports that are submitted.
I make a motion.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Parks, uh, committee, uh, do we have anything for you folks? Uh, when do you want?
Our press, we didn't meet this month. Okay, so we're going to meet, um, December 2nd.
December 2nd?
Right.
What time is it?
Uh, six thirty. Nobody here.
Now, look at, um, I do have parts in the, one every number of the lights in the park. Done?
Wow. The lights are gonna go on, uh, the first three weeks of December, um, Thursday through Saturday. Um, so, uh, I believe right after, excuse me, uh, they'll start the, um, installation of, uh, the lights.
Actually, I've got them here. We're going to start putting them up on the twenty-second and twenty-third, and then again on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So they're just laid on, is it the fourth?
Mm-hmm.
The fourth they go up in the park will be open for drive-through.
So, from the chamber, we'll be there this night. Um, unlock the park, turn the lights on. Uh, people will be welcome to drive-through. Um, there's no charge. Um, they'll take donations and, um, people can, uh, vote on their favorite display and, um, yeah, vote and pass and out the king king. We encourage everybody that, anybody who's interested in signing up, do that now on the Chamber website and reserve a spot and still are plenty of Christmas party. Christmas tree is down. It'll be fun though.
And we'll make sure we get it on the website. Uh, make sure we got the station there. Uh, picking up websites next time, wait. Uh, the safety, uh, website has been working on our new website and it is, um, live now. Uh, it is fantastic. Obviously, we've got anything new. We're working out some bugs and adding a few, um, not bugs, but... So, that is gonna be all. And I believe we're gonna try to, you know, do a little presentation a little later here, or if you would say not.
There's no internet on Kuki's web address.
Okay.
But it is live now, so you can't look at it on, look at it on the phone at cityofvolso.com.
And that's the other, uh, thing that we have gone as, uh, I believe tomorrow, all our emails have been switched over from, uh, dot org to dot gov. So it's still the same, uh, initial part, okay? Uh, those on cityofvolso.com at dot gov. So everybody else is the same email except it's, except it's dot org, but... The plan is always, uh, I don't know if they even have a meeting this week. Do you have?
I, I just submitted, uh, Mr. Anderson's hundred weather and ice statement. Yeah. But of course, then this is, we're not gonna have a meeting in December.
Okay.
We canceled the meeting in December.
Okay. Did that man come on this last one or?
Uh, I would just go through the report. Okay. I don't really speak, but...
Um, budget committee, um, on, 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 care, we have, uh, something to say.
I was hoping that Tracy was gonna be here. At the workshop, behave everybody and copy the proposed budget and ask you all for your view and give us some questions, some comments. Give us some ideas, some things, issues you saw. Tracy was the only one to pick up back to us with any kind of response, and she's not here tonight for me to thank her. The truth is, is she went through the budget line by line. Folks, there's three hundred ninety-three line items in that budget. She gave us twenty-eight, twenty-five? Twenty-eight. Concerns she had. And on Tuesday, we had a budget committee where we went through each one of those line items, one item at a time. Having been a military inspector for years, I'll tell you, you'd be surprised how dull you get when you're looking at the same thing all the time. She gave us a fresh glance, a fresh look, and some fresh input. And folks, we found some things that we had had wrong that we had to fix. So please, help us out by looking at these documents and coming up with some ideas, because we get dull. Uh, I mean, we started doing this budget back in Jake Bennerberg. This is down low Bennerberg. And we can get dull if we keep looking at the same information and we can make mistakes. And we caught about five mistakes that she caught and showed them to us. So please, if you see her, tell her thank you, because it's all this.
Tracy who?
Tracy Bappy.
Thank you.
You know, it's, we need to work together as a village to make this thing work. So please, help us out. Other than that, budget chair.
And, uh, I'm going along with, uh, Tracy Bappy and Marco, which, um, have come to my office on Tuesday's go and are helping us, the city, work on grantway. So, uh, we're getting more volunteers, um, helping us out as a community. And so they can make more, hopefully, money to help support some of the, um, things that we want to do for the city. So, thank you again for Tracy Bappy and Marco for stepping up. And if there's anybody else out there that is, is willing to help us, please do. Uh, any other, um, comments or, uh, questions on the Parks Committee, Budget Committee? That's what we'll ask.
I want to say something real quick, just so everybody in the audience understands. When Randall said that she submitted twenty-something questions, we did answer each and every one of those questions in writing and returned it to her so that we addressed, so that she knows that we addressed all the issues. And in the letter, it was, it was written by the committee. Uh, we did thank her for taking the time, because it's, it's a monumental task looking through this budget. And she went through a fine tooth comb and found some mistakes that we had made. And then there was some, some easy pictures, but, um, just so you know that, again, we're trying to be as transparent and as responsive to the people as we can be. So, since she was the only one that sent us an email, you know, we figured it deserved an answer, because it was thoughtful and it was respectful in the way that it asked questions. And so we did answer every one of them and we did return that to her. So, just wanted to, that wasn't real too clear. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear. We did answer everything.
My, uh, I do, well, she submitted and our interest to it. So, anybody wants to look at it or wants to, uh, request a copy of it, go ahead, here, City Ball, I also put it on the website. Citizens' comments on, uh, just, um, just, I have only, I mean, citizens' comments. Well, I'm the congressman, I mean, um...
Uh, by you back to that, yeah. Uh, I had a talk with Jeremy Rizley. I probably cannot think of his last name today from AGFC about our high water infrastructure. He was one of the people, uh, that was really pushing, trying to get it through prior to twenty twenty. Uh, right now, we're trying to do a meeting going with all the stakeholders, us, Corbin, the years congressional level, and of course, AGFC. And, you know, it's gonna be pretty monumental ordeal. Um, it's gonna be a lot of money. We said ballpark, just from what they were going through last time, it's gonna be about one point two to another project. So, we're gonna have, him and I spoke at length today about getting vulnerable and really smart funding, getting this meeting together so that we have all the stakeholders in place. So, that's where we're at with that. And that's all I have.
Any other comments, uh, comments? Again, sorry. Uh, citizen comments, I'm the gentleman, I have only, um, of course, the natural borders of business resolution, twenty twenty-five, hour twenty-seven, proposed twenty twenty-six city budget. Uh, Volso, City Council. Resolution number twenty twenty-five, hour twenty-seven, the resolution by the municipal governing body to adopt the twenty twenty-six municipal budget for the city of Volso. The, uh, the city council, the city of Volso, are going to assess the state twenty twenty-six city budget. This resolution may be passed tonight. We have had time to look forward. We've been working on it for ten, ten months. Uh, look for a motion to accept at this point. And look for a second.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Time for discussion. Any discussion on the budget? No discussion. Look for votes. Let's go with the voice or roll call vote.
I got a question, boy.
Okay.
Back on fire, can you let everybody know about the eighty-eight thousand seven hundred that that will be my vote? Correct?
Yeah, we made the questions on the ones out there.
Five hundred and fifty.
It was on the twenty-fourth, on the twenty twenty-five, uh, but it had nothing to do with the twenty-one yesterday.
I need to age a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions for discussion? We got a motion, we got a second. Um, do a roll call vote.
Devin Hedges?
Yeah.
Governor Hedges?
Yeah.
Governor Brown?
Yeah.
Governor Matthews?
Yeah.
Governor Bowles?
Yeah.
Governor Bruce?
Stand.
Abayak, Governor Rock?
Yes.
Can't believe we actually have a twenty-six, twenty-six budget. Thank you so much. One thing I want to add is, uh, we have some actual wonders. So, uh, it is, uh, to the starting point, uh, discussion on the state of Arkansas, Act two eighty-three of twenty twenty-five, ward-based voting. Now, uh, we received an outlook from AML and basically this, this state is a ward-based voting ordinance is not filed, but of course, July, January, one, twenty twenty-six, then the council will be elected as members at large. If your municipality currently elects council members at large and wishes to continue to elect council members at large, there is nothing for them to do. The, the thing with this is the city of Volso has three wards, two aldermen per ward, and in fact, we have always voted for our councilmen at large. And, uh, everybody in the city votes for all council members. Okay. And as far as, uh, the council, I would like to have, um, some sort of motion. Do we want to continue with, um, status vote, or do we want to change?
I know that we keep it as is, not follow anything, let it go.
Second. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Did you want to say something in this discussion?
No, I was gonna try to push the button before anybody else.
I, I want to say something about this. Um, this is a really unfortunate illustration of the nonsense that happens on Facebook. Uh, the amount of misinformation about this was incredible. And I got calls from people that were just, their hair on fire, and we were gonna take their voting rights away, and it was gonna be the end of the world, and, you know, everything was gonna be horrible. And it was just served by a couple of people with just a huge amount of disinformation. And I, you know, it's not my broken record up here, but we got to stop this. And the only way to stop it is to answer it, is to, you know, it's, it's okay to ignore and get that, because it's very tempting to ignore. But this was one, that's one example of a couple of people posting posts that were just blatantly false. And I had constituents call me, and I know other people did, that were really genuinely concerned that their voting rights somehow were gonna be infringed. And I don't know what to do about this, but it's, it's gotta stop. It, it needs to be addressed and it's ridiculous. So, if you have a question about things and it looks like something's gonna happen that's gonna dramatically affect you or take some right away that you have, please call us, so that you don't get upset about it. But this was an easy one. This was a do-nothing and everything stays the same deal. I mean, it was that simple. So...
Thanks, people, the citizens having a, a voice and who they want to represent the city. Any other on that issue? Uh, I am looking for a motion to suspend the rules to, uh, hear a resolution that I just received from IDOT this afternoon. I'm gonna be pretend to rule.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
This is to, uh, hear a resolution number twenty twenty-five, R twenty-eight, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Volso to utilize state aid street monies for the following city project. Where the city of Volso understands that state aid street program funds are available for certain city projects at the following participating ratios. Reconstruction, resurfaces, city construction of city foster works, work base, primarily engineering and construction, engineering right-of-way utility constructions. State aid is one hundred percent, cities is zero percent. Um, now therefore, we have resolved that the city council of the city of Volso, Arkansas, that section one, the city will participate in moments with its designated responsibilities in this project. Section two, the mayor or the mayors that need this here by office and directed to execute all appropriate agreements and contracts necessary to expedite the construction of this city's project. Section three, the city agrees upon completion of the project to assume the maintenance of the right-of-way by city forces and/or other, including utilities and individuals in accordance with the prevailing Arkansas Department of Transportation regulation. Section four, the city budget is supposed to forth and hereby authorize the Arkansas Department of Transportation to initiate actions to implement this project. Have a motion to accept.
I like a motion. Roll set.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
But this is, is we were granted, uh, a couple of years ago, a three hundred thousand dollar grant to do, uh, certain streets in the city of Volso. And it's a two-inch overlay that the state highway department will be conducting. They will actually do all the work and put out all the bids. All we have to do is... All we have to do is get the resolutions, uh, signed and passed so that they can start the project with their bidding process and that should take effect as of January twenty twenty-six.
We have a list of streets already up there.
They have, uh, submitted their plans on it and, uh, we got Elm Street, we got Pinehurst, we got, uh, Walden Lane, we've got, uh, Red Bud and Short Press. I mean, there's, you know, and certain lines, but what they did is they, whatever those lines were, to come under three hundred thousand dollars is what they're, uh, that were, and their plans here. So some of the streets that were initially planned aren't in there, uh, just due to the fact that it went over three hundred thousand, so. But thank you for getting that taken care of. Uh, citizens comments? We have any citizens comments?
Old North.
Oh. We moved a little slow.
Yeah. Indeed, it's a real quick test before you're moving. Just want to say thank you all. I think seven o'clock means all over. You know, in months past, your statues, maybe two, two and a half hours, they were contentious, there were police officers throwing people out, people cursing, uh, threatening others, uh, you guys have done a great job. And I think it shows the city's cleaner, there are new businesses opening up, grant money is being found to make improvements, this high water risk is going to be huge for the city. We all know Kaden's coming to town. You've done a great job. I know you get a lot of your refund on Facebook and whatnot and, but, and no one ever tells you, thank you, I'm telling you thank you. And water department, thank you. Been a lot about instance, Rosewood construction broke down and it has some water issues and I've seen those guys out there at two o'clock in the morning out there humping it, making, making sure people have water, because water departments can create that too. But thank you all for doing what you did and good, good work and, uh, seeing the city come together and so wonderful industry. Thank you.
Any other citizens comments? We lost, oh, yeah. Mayor's comments? At this time, I want to announce that I have hired a full-time police officer to the city after recognition of the law enforcement committee and those, uh, our new officer here is Ada Kira. She's been sworn in today. Uh, she is certified, uh, officer, so she really doesn't have to go to a train, she's very familiar and she is our new officer. Now, uh, the officer received a, uh, a letter from Chief Pat and one of the things that we, we found out today is when we stay under, um, high officers, we don't have to pay for, uh, report ratings, so we're going to be able to save, uh, what was it, seventeen hundred dollars, is it, uh, here, uh, by doing that. But having the three full-time police officers, uh, he's going to be submitted in a schedule and he recommended and I talked to every one of our officers being, uh, part-time also, but, uh, the three, uh, full-time that we have, we'd like to go to, back to what we originally had in salary, uh, police officers. With that being said, they are then being able to work up to a hundred hours and we wouldn't have to pay overtime. It's definitely a benefit to us and what we work on, the chief and I have been working on is a schedule where, uh, they, uh, on those times that were not, we would have an officer on call. And right now, we do have officers on call and they get, uh, two hundred dollars per day here. With that being said, we're going to be able to save the city money, but still have full powers for, with our police.
Any comments? One of the things that I was really impressed with, with all the full-time officers is one of the reasons they wanted to go to salary again was so that they could volunteer for the volunteer fire department. Because when they were on hours, they could not do that. And that was important to all of them. And I think that says a lot about the police force in this town currently. They're living here, they're vested in the community, they want to be part of the community and they want to be part of the volunteer fire department. So all the benefits and all the sustainability that are important, to me, what was more important was they really wanted to, to volunteer for the fire department. And that says a lot in my book. So thank you, all of the officers.
Uh, I thought the administrative policy is, um, twenty twenty-five, eighteen ten. Uh, we're going to change our city hall hours starting January first, twenty twenty-six. Um, it'll be eight to five, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and eight to twelve on Friday. What we found is it's been open, uh, up until five thirty, we didn't have anybody coming, okay? So, uh, because if we could give more hours on Friday, uh, they all will be excited that that would be more beneficial to our community. Corps of Engineers operations is looking over a proposal for this golf layout at Hannah Muster Park. Uh, myself and Donovan Butler and Turner from the Corps gives permits for cutting any kind of rush trees or anything like that. Uh, we met, uh, what was it, Monday and, uh, he had walked through, he has, even though we have, even though we have approval from the Corps of Engineers, Real Estate, to put this golf in at Hannah Muster Park, the Mountain Home Office's operations, they have to also get approval. They're a different division from Real Estate, so. Well, Turner's going to be talking to his boss, who has to talk to his boss, which is Mark Case, who's charged with Mountain Home Office. Since we did okay from them, where, uh, there's kind of, if you, well, we have a sewer easement that runs down where we want to put some of these golf, uh, nets at. And in order for us to clear that area, it may still fall under a hard surface, road surface that the city has, but he has to get the okay from his boss saying that we can bring machinery in there, like a bush hog that can dig down the, the brush, okay? We're not asking to cut any trees, um, when and anything, we're just asking to clear our easement and he's got to get the approval from his boss. So that's going to work. It is what it is. I sent off another email requesting the Corps requesting approval of selling playground equipment that we have at Runcity Park. And, uh, the Real Estate Officer, Josh Whitaker, uh, emailed and he never got a copy of the original one, but yet I looked at my emails and he was, CC drew that and I sent it to Mark Case at Mountain Home Office. I resented to him just last, uh, the beginning of this week, so he does have the plans, uh, of this equipment. What it requires is six holes, uh, roughly one, uh, two foot deep by one foot, uh, long and wide or spin circumference for the structure of that. So they're, they're going to have to give the approval to dig up the big holes and that's what we're saying. Uh, I need to have the council, uh, make a motion to go down the Exelon Ben and dismemberment insurance policy for public force possession where we, if we hire a public force for us, uh, his, uh, insurance policy will cost the city eighty dollars.
Make a motion.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we discussed this, the city emails will be changed into the dot org and, uh, to the dot gov from the dot org. For Arkansas State Law, the change will take effect on Friday, it's not tomorrow. Stacy, do you have anything more to add to the website or?
Um, if you're not getting it wrong, I don't know, and I'll pick it. We are giving all documents on there. We have most of the documents on there in print, but we're going to have the, the park, um, name.
Park reports and planning.
And, yeah, and the treasury report.
Treasury report, yeah. The city council, not minutes.
The minutes are on there, the regulations are on there and the, um, new resolution one, four, six.
Yeah, and we're just going to add a file for our current report. So we're, we're trying to get everything out there, so every citizen can see what we are doing here. If you got any questions? My daughter's over, I will answer any question that you, I may not give you the right, uh, damn you want to hear about, I'm going to make you an answer, so, you know. We're not hiding anything. We have made vast improvements here. I want to make a motion.
All, all the motions will be there.
Do I ever type a thing? All of them favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?